Good evening. Wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, September 16th, 2024. By the way, Mexican Independence Day. Please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, with grateful hearts, Lord. We have so much to be grateful for. Lord, even though things happen in this world, we still live in the greatest country there is in this world. Lord, we praise you tonight for Lee County, the things you've allowed us to do as commissioners for this county and this city to hopefully make it better. Lord, every decision we make, we're just simply flesh and blood. Would you help us make the best decision, Lord, that will be right in your eyes? We're praised and glorified. Thank you for the rain tonight, God. Keep each one safe as they travel to and from tonight and give you glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, this evening. Just a reminder to mute your cellphones. And as I used to do with my students, if it inadvertently went off, I would stop and let them answer it. So, just to move on, we have some items to add to the agenda. Under Proclamation Presentations, item 3A is Veteran Services Office Recognition. And then I'll need you to change 3A to B and 3B to C. And then we're going to remove item 2O from the consent agenda. And we're going to add item 7E, which is the updated action item on the OT Sloan Pool Maintenance Contract. Any other additions to the agenda?
I would like to move 6A and 7C to consent agenda, please.
6A purchase.
6A and 7C. 6A, the Viper Program purchase, and then 7C, the Resolution in Support of Establishing a Vehicle Maintenance and Facility Committee with the Lee County Board of Education.
Moving 7C to consent agenda as well?
Yes, sir.
I did miss an add-on, and that's item 2W, which is the Emergency Communication Systems Improvement Capital Budget Ordinance. Any other changes to the agenda?
Question on, so we had added 7E?
Yes.
Okay, is that the same thing as 2X?
It is 2O. We removed 2O.
No, I know, but 2X says add-on, updated action item, OT Sloan Pool Maintenance Repair. So I'm trying to make sure one doesn't go on consent, and then we discuss it.
I didn't catch that. I put it on for new business, item 7E. We can scratch that. That's already on the consent agenda. My apologies. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? I didn't catch that. All right, so that we're clear. Old business, item 6A, we'll put on the consent agenda. Item 7A and 7C, excuse me, 7C, Resolution in Support of Establishing Vehicle Maintenance Facility Committee with Lee County Board of Education on the consent agenda. And we had two add-ons on the consent agenda, which is 2W, which is Emergency Communication Systems Improvement Capital Project Budget Ordinance, which you have at your desk, and 2X, which is the updated action item on OT Sloan Pool Maintenance Repairs, which you have at your desk. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. This is the fun part. Good evening. If I could please have our Veteran Services Officers Ellsworth Cupid and Kyla Love come forward, please? I had a very long day on Saturday, and I got home late Saturday night because, you know, we had the fair going on. And there were two things in the mailbox, and one of them was what I'm going to read to you, but I never read it until Sunday morning. This is dated September 11th, 2024. The Honorable Kirk D. Smith, Chairman, Lee County Board of Commissioners, dear Chairman Smith, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to express my heartfelt gratitude for your efforts in Lee County to support our veterans and their families. The dedication of you and your fellow board members to this cause is appreciated and has undoubtedly improved the lives of countless veterans who have served our country with honor. I recently returned from Cherokee, where I attended the Fall Meeting of the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers. At the meeting, I had the opportunity to interact with many of these individuals, including Ellsworth Cupid and Kyla Love from Lee County. You are blessed in Lee County to have Ellsworth and Kyla and their colleagues working for you and your veterans. Your Veteran Service Officers would not be able to do what they do without the support of this board. So thank you for allowing them the time and providing the resources for them to attend the conference. The allocation of resources from Lee County is a testament to your commitment to the well-being of our veterans and their families. We are proud to share that in 2023, Military Missions in Action directly assisted 4,639 veterans and their families across North Carolina. We are only able to continue assisting veterans in part thanks to you, excuse me, thanks to the collaboration between us and your Veteran Services Officers. So again, thank you for your support of the work they do. As you know, they provide a truly invaluable service. Once again, thank you for your leadership and the board's unwavering support. It makes a real impact in the lives of our veterans. Your efforts are appreciated by those directly impacted, as well as the broader community that values the sacrifices made by our military personnel and their families. Respectfully, Greg Gebhardt, Executive Director, Veteran, Iraq War of Military Missions in Action. Thank you. Who is receiving the Hispanic Heritage Proclamation? Unfortunately, the weather being what it is, a lot of folks didn't show up. But I know Victor Pizarro's here. Victor, if I could have you, please? I apologize for the weather. This is a proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. The observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month as it is celebrated today. It calls on public officials, educators, librarians, and all people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas, since the 16th century, North Carolina saw Spanish explorers by the names of Lucas Vasquez de Leon, Hernando de Sota, Domingo Fernandez, Pedro de Coronas, Captain Juan Pardo, and Sergeant Hernando Boiano, leaving a long Hispanic legacy in our state. And whereas, September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Brazil, Mexico, Chile, Belize celebrate their Independence Day on September 7th, 16th, 18th, and 21st, respectively. Therefore, the observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean Islands. And whereas during 2020, the U.S. Census Bureau counted 1,122 Hispanic residents in Lee County out of a population of 63,285 people, or about 20.7% of the county's residents identify as Hispanic and Latino. And whereas, Lee County recognizes the unique and vital role of our Hispanic and Latino residents' play in the fabric of our economy and workforce, as well as our faith communities and social tapestry. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Lee County, and urges its residents to enjoy this cultural celebration presented the 16th day of September, 2024, signed by me and attested by our clerk. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion to approve, sir.
Motion to approve has been made. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This proclamation is honoring Manufacturing Day. Whereas Manufacturing Day is a celebration of modern manufacturing meant to inspire the next generation of manufacturers. And whereas, although Manufacturing Day officially occurs on the first Friday in October, this year is October 4th, any day can be Manufacturing Day. And whereas Manufacturing Day will be recognized with the annual Manufacturing Day Industrial Showcase at the E. Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions Center. And whereas, the Moore Center stands as a unique and unparalleled educational facility dedicated to addressing the critical workforce needs of the fields in advanced manufacturing and biotechnology, and plays a pivotal role in equipping students and professionals with the necessary skills, knowledge, and hands-on experience to excel in these rapidly evolving industries. And whereas, Central Carolina Community Colleges Industry Service Office works with industries in Chatham, Harnett, and Lee Counties to maximize success through quality workforce training. And whereas, this Manufacturing Day event is an outstanding learning experience for students who will indeed be our next generation of manufacturers. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the 4th day of October, 2024, as Manufacturing Day in Lee County, and deem it an honor to present this proclamation in recognition of Manufacturing Day with appreciation to many manufacturing companies of our community, as well as the E. Eugene Moore Manufacturing and Biotech Solutions Center and Central Carolina Community Colleges Industry Services. Presented the 16th day of September, 2024, signed by me and attested by the clerk.
Motion to approve?
Sorry. Do I have a motion to approve? The motion's been made to approve the proclamation for Manufacturing Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I'm sure I'm not out of sequence here, I'm a little off today, is public comments. And I do have Kathy Griffith. And Kathy, if you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And you do have three minutes.
My name is, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, because I have a teacher voice. We could dispense with this if you'd like. My name is Kathy Griffith. I live at 304 South Main Street in Broadway. In recent weeks, I have heard that no one uses the library. This is an all-too-common misconception in our county. Allow me to share a few numbers from the official Public Library Survey, which is compiled and submitted each fiscal year to the Statistics and Directory of North Carolina Public Libraries, and which the commissioners have in their information packets this month. Book circulation for the fiscal year 2324, 117,239, which is up by 11,235 from the previous year. Electronic content, 48,780, up from the previous year by 8,344. Total collection use, 192,535, up from the previous year by 24,115. Library visits, 74,344, up from the previous year by 12,077. Programs offered, 651, up from the previous year by 182. This is only a brief glimpse of what is happening in your library. Our talented, diligent, and dedicated staff keep the library doors open for the folks of Lee County for 88 hours per week between the two locations. They are the beating heart of Lee County Library. And further, Wonder Woman, also known as Director Beth List, inspires both the staff and the board with her professional expertise, her selfless energy, her keen intelligence, and her boundless faith in what libraries can do for communities. And finally, the members of the Lee County Library Board would like to express our deep gratitude to each and every commissioner who supports our library with demonstrated understanding of what the library does for the residents of Lee County today, and for your clear vision of what the library will do for the future of Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for the fiscal year 26, Lee County Community Transportation Program Applications. I'm sorry. Melanie Rogers?
Good evening, everyone. I'm requesting to hold a public hearing for the FY '26 Lee County Community Transportation Program applications. These applications are due to the North Carolina Department of Transportation no later than October 4th, 2024. The Community Transportation Program provides assistance to coordinate existing transportation programs operating in Lee County, as well as provides transportation options and services for the communities within the service area. These services are currently provided using demand response and subscription. Services are rendered by the County of Lee Transit System. The total estimated amount requested for the period July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 are for 5311 Administrative Combined Capital and Mobility Manager. The total amount of grant funding is $891,879, and the local share, which is a required match, of $101,727. I'm asking for the public hearing to be this evening.
Questions for Melanie. Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sharp? Okay, I will open the public hearing. It's now open to request the public hearing for fiscal year '26, Lee County Community Transportation Program Applications. I would like to seek anyone in favor to come forward and speak. If so, please state your name and your address. Anyone opposed? Seems like everybody's avoiding the rain. One more time, anyone for the public hearing? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, go in once, go in twice. Public hearing is now closed. We have committed. Thank you. We move the Viper Program to consent agenda. New business, Purchasing Policy Revision, item number 7A.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to bring to you a purchasing policy revision for your consideration. The purpose of the purchasing policy update request is to modify the thresholds that are more in line with the cost of goods and services today, as well as to streamline the process in finance, as well as the rest of the county, to continue to provide services to the community in an efficient manner. The purchasing policy was originally adopted in August 2009 and has received several revisions since that date. Next. There are four main components of the purchasing policy revision that I'm asking you to consider. The first would be the purchase order threshold. The second is the informal bid threshold. Third, the county manager signing authority. And fourth, the sole source approval. Next. So on the screen behind you in your paperwork, there are several counties that have been polled. We polled approximately 20 counties. We polled all the ones that were neighboring us, plus those that were in our population group within, give or take 12,000. And so these are the ones that we found to meet that criteria. The ones that have a script mark of number one are considering a purchasing policy update this calendar year. And then the ones with the two, they are the ones in the similar population group. So you can see that right now, we are at the $500 threshold for purchase orders. That means anything $500 or more has to come through the purchasing workflow, and we are asking for that to be moved to $1,000. The informal bid threshold is currently at 5,000. That means any purchases 5,000 or greater have to be bid or receive competitively bid pricing. So you can see that as we're asking to go to the 30,000, that is more in line with other counties that are neighboring us and/or in our population group. And the formal bid threshold is the same. Again, that looks the same as or very similar to most of the other counties in this table. We are also asking that the Board of Commissioners give the county manager signing authority, move that from 30,000 to 50,000. And I'll talk more about the reasons for that in just a moment. Okay, so like I said, the purchase order threshold is currently $500. So like I said, the purchase order threshold is currently $500. An average of, the average is 40% of our purchase orders are less than $1,000. And that calculation is based on the full fiscal years. It does not include this fiscal year. The proposed threshold is to go to $1,000. There will still be the same exceptions in place, which would include, as exempted by policy, those would be items that do not require a purchase order regardless, and purchasing card purchase orders. Those have to have a purchase order in place before employees can use their purchasing card. And then, of course, if a vendor requires a purchase order and it's less than $1,000, we would still issue one. The changes will allow us to streamline the purchasing process by reducing staff that reviews the requisitions at less than $1,000. There's currently a purchasing workflow in our financial software. So the department head or their designee reviews and approves. Then the respective assistant county manager reviews and approves, purchasing agent, and then myself. So this would decrease quite a bit of work for the, inside of the finance department, as well as for the departments. Those numbers that are represented in the graph are the total count in the red burgundy. So in 2022, we had 1,257 purchase orders. 515 of them were under $1,000. And 491 of the 1,277 in 2023 were less than $1,000. And in 2024, 556 of the 1,292 purchase orders issued were less than $1,000. So on average, like I said, that does not include the 2025 yet. We are at about 701 purchase orders issued to date, with 156 of them being less than $1,000. Next, please. So for the informal bid threshold, the current threshold is $5,000. And this excludes purchases approved as a sole source, a state contract, or other competitively bid program. There are requirements that departments, or these programs, have to meet in order for a department to use a competitively bid program, but they would be programs that you have heard before, like Sourcewell, the Sheriff's Association, and such. The Houston Galveston Cooperative Purchasing Alliance is one that you just approved. Our current informal bid threshold run starts at 5,000, and it goes up to the state limit of $89,999,099. In the graph above, you'll see the informal bids that we had for the past three years and the start of this fiscal year that were under $30,000. So in 2022, five of our 13, five of the 13 bids that were, and then the informal range, which is under the $30,000, that allowed us to not have to come to the board, five of those required a rebid, which is a, which is not quite twice the work, but it is almost. So the department has to develop the specs, and then the purchasing agent has to post it. We hold a bid opening. And then there has to be a determination of, was there three responsive, responsible bids? If there was not, then there has to be a determination if a rebid can be waived. And in this case, we did not waive five of the 13 in 2022. I didn't have all the information available for 2022, so that's why it's not up there. I just had the count. For 2023, six of the 13 bids in the informal range, less than $30,000. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. In fiscal 2023, 83% of the informal bids needed to be rebid. And in fiscal 2024, while the percentage dropped, the count was still higher, and that is indicative of additional work for the finance department, as well as the departments. The rebids with that increased percentage, that also increases the delay of services to the community, because a bid has to be posted on our website for five business days before it can be opened, and then another five business days at minimum in order to do the rebid. If there are not three bids to open on the first bid opening, then we will go out for rebid, and then we will accept or open whatever is available at the second rebid opening. Next. So moving on to the county manager signing authority for contracts, mini brooks exemptions. If we could move those from 30,000 for contracts, 30,000 for the mini brooks, to 50 for each of those, that would bring that all in line with the change order resolution that you have recently adopted. And so that will reduce confusion between the departments as to what needs to come to the board. It will just be straight across the, it would be the exact amount across the board. Next. And so we have, the sole source that we have been bringing to the board that has been over 30,000 actually has to be for any amount. So any, any department that wants to claim sole source for any amount will have to bring that to you and have you approve it. And that is per General Statute 143-129E6. And so there are a few different considerations for sole source, and they're up on the screen. Performance or price competition for products that are not available. A needed product is available for only one source of supply. Or standardization or compatibility is overriding consideration. We do have quite a few sole sources, so those, those could be plentiful coming your way. The increase in these informal bid thresholds will help that some, but you will still see a great deal more come your way. Questions?
Thank you Candace. Questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp?
Seems like a reasonable request to me. Whatever makes it easy for staff, I support that.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I guess I have a question more on the wording. So like on page four and page 18, and then on page 20 is where I've seen it, it states the county manager or the designee. I would assume that in the event the county manager was incapacitated or couldn't do it, she's already got steps too. So I don't, if there's any way to maybe just keep it as county manager? And then on page 20, there's... Hang on, I'm sorry. I highlighted it. At the, the emergency purchases, just update that. I think about the middle of the paragraph says, "Contact the county manager or his designee for PO approval." Just probably need to update the his part. Or just strike it completely. That's about it. Other than that, it sounds good to me.
Sounds good, we'll do it.
Commissioner Connect?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
From what I'm understanding, there's still another rubber stamping. There's still checks and balances. It's county managers, finance, and things like that. But it is to help streamline and help projects move along faster.
It is. So there will still be a purchase order or a requisition process in place. And some departments may still choose to put in requisitions that are less than $1,000, but they will not be required to except for, for their purchasing card. So like I said, we do see a high volume of less than $1,000. There still will be those checks and balances. The departments still have to follow a set of rules where they have to get three quotes, show their effort to do that, and then document what, you know, what those efforts were, which we will attach to the requisition in case they're not able to obtain three quotes. So there still will be an effort that has to be made in order for the department to get the best price for the services or the goods that they're trying to acquire.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the people to know it wasn't a rubber stamp and moving along process that we're still frugal with their money. Thank you.
Candace, the basic premise of this change is inflation?
It is. We've never changed the informal bid threshold, to my knowledge. It started at $5,000, and that was in August of 2009. We have made a change for the purchase order threshold from $100 to $500 a couple of years ago. We've made some other changes, including updating the county manager signing authority from 20,000 to 30,000. The 50,000 just kind of brings that all in line, and it makes it a kind of like an even, just, just an even, a consistent amount, if you will. But yes, we have not made that change, and we do see where it is really hindering progress with departments as they find that the cost of goods and services are very high. It's, for instance, if HVAC needs, if HVAC goes out, general services needs to get one, there's not one to buy for less than $5,000. It is not hard at all for, for one sport to need, you know, $5,000 worth of jerseys. So it is very easy to get to that $5,000 mark. And we do appreciate the consideration of these increases. We understand that that's, you know, that that's a big ask, but we feel like it's going to be what's best for the county, the departments, the community.
So efficiency is part of the process here?
Absolutely. Like I said, the workflow for requisitions is quite detailed. It will still remain detailed for those that we see, but we will not see as many.
Thank you.
We have a very informal, informal bid process, where we accept them by Sid bids, sealed bids. I'll get it out right in a minute. Your disease is rubbing off and stuff. So for sealed bids between 5 and 30,000, that is very cumbersome if we don't get the three bids in and stuff. So what we've seen over the years is with inflation and all, there's fewer and fewer between that 5 and 30. But the amount of work that it's taking to accomplish those few is quite a bit. So that's the reason for coming to ask you to...
And just for note, I did tell the manager, don't look at Harnett County's limits. We're not going there.
Trust me, I don't want that much authority.
No, there were several counties that were not included that were, I don't see us ever reaching that in my lifetime. It's not something that I'd like to be responsible for.
Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing policy revision?
So moved, but the, as long as they're good with the kind of caveat change on the wording.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion's been made to approve the revision, provided the changes were made, brought up by Commissioner Vorbeck. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you Candace.
All right, thank you. I believe I am going to be doing the USDA lease extension. So we're bringing to you tonight the Sixth Amendment of the USDA lease agreement. That is going to be from January 1 of '24 through December 31 of 2028. The USDA pays an annual rent of $31,538.04. Monthly amount would be $2,628.17. This, like I said, this has been the, this is the Sixth Amendment. The USDA has been renting this area of the cooperative, the McSwain Center for many years. And so they would like to continue to do so.
Questions? Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
My question is, do they realize that they're getting a steal?
I, I do not know if they do or not. They probably do, but...
So I would like to at least, I know this, we're heading into a three-year lease again. But at least put a note or let them know that, at least getting them, this can't even be close to market rent, which I know it's the government, so I'm probably reaching for the stars here. But would at least like to try and, do you know what our rent was? Or what their rent has been? Has it been, have they ever had an increase?
Not in my recent memory.
Okay. I'd at least like to have that discussion, I think, before signing the next lease.
And for clarification, it's actually a five-year lease, not a three-year. It may say three, but it's actually five years. But the notice did say five years.
Okay. Well, 2028.
I will send an email to the gentleman tomorrow and give him a heads up and put that on the calendar.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
What was the rate last time, do you know?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what the rate was last time?
The same, yeah.
Oh, same, hasn't changed?
It has not changed. I believe Amendment Four and Five have been the same amount.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
I'm just curious. Inflation is incorporated in that. You know, we do pay for water. We pay for sewer, oh no, that's septic. We pay for electricity. Do they pay for their own phones?
I am not certain about that. I would have to find out.
IT? Do they?
No, they don't use our IT.
They don't use our IT? Okay.
They may use the internet that's there to access their network. But we don't do IT services for them outside that.
So how do we contract or negotiate with their contracting authority to possibly raise the rent?
Well, the question, who is, who wrote the lease?
It's their lease.
Their, theirs.
I'm sorry?
It's the USDA. Like they provide it to us.
Do they, do we have to do it for five years? Can we do it for two years and then negotiate two years from now? I mean, is it...
Negotiate now if you want to.
Well, they're on a, I think we're already expired lease. So I think that's why there is a push on.
We can go back and ask them if they would, instead of doing the five-year term that the board felt more comfortable. I don't know what that year may look like for you all. You can tell us, but...
What was that, I'm sorry?
I mean, I think we can go back and ask them to do a different term, if you would like us to, on this lease. If it's a two years, we can go back and ask them to do that.
Well, term, what about rate?
Do what? Well, yeah. I don't think locking it in for five years is advantageous for us. It's advantageous for them.
Where does this, where does the, where's the money go? Lease money go?
It goes into our miscellaneous revenue that helps support...
I'm sorry?
It goes into our miscellaneous revenue, which helps support our general fund expenditures.
Thank you.
The USDA, is the soil service under USDA, or is that separate?
That's separate.
So you do have the soil services, that with the state or the federal?
The soil and conservation is separate from the USDA. They are, the USDA is part of the housing, I believe. That's what they do here at this local office.
So is there, is there a time constraint on this? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, the lease has expired in January, but if the board would like us to do, we could say we...
But what's the difference now? It was expired in January. I mean, what's another?
That's what I'm saying. So what we can do is if you all would like us to, we can go back and say the board wanted to approve a two-year lease as opposed to, as opposed to the five-year lease.
And rate as well, while you're at it. What's the going rate?
Well, I don't know if, we can ask, but I think that we're going to be, or do a one-year lease, and like you're back to where you are come December. I just need to be able to start those negotiations. to be able to start those negotiations with them.
Do we have a motion to negotiate?
Well, I think we can do the one year, finish off the year and then renegotiate.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been made to negotiate a one-year lease to, in order to...
Well, I think it's finishing, I think they're just making it retroactive to January, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so just finish up the year.
Yeah, so it'd be a, a lease effective date from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024.
Right, and then you have time to negotiate.
And then we have time to negotiate on a slightly fairer price.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our resolution was moved to consent agenda. I have a request to appear before the board, Mr. Thomas Boehr. For your information, the information that they're going to be covering is at your location. For copyright infringement and other items, the information is not on the screen.
Hello, my name is Thomas Boehr, Thomas C. Boehr. I'm a ruling elder at Heritage Reformed Presbyterian Church. My son, Thomas F. Boehr, is the teaching elder or what normally you would call a pastor. I just want to make a few opening remarks and then I'm going to have Thomas the Senior come forward. But I want to remind you that we did come here last October and our request was that there would be an ordinance that would regulate drag events, in particular Drag Story Hour, and we circulated a petition, received approximately 265 signatures that supported that petition. I believe that you may have that in front of you. But let me just say this, that as you recall at the beginning of our session here, we opened with prayer and that prayer was made to God the Father in the name of His Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. How do we know that? It is because God revealed that to us. We would not know that unless God revealed that to us and He did so through the scriptures of the Old and New Testament. The fact that we prayed to God the Father in the name of His Son shows you the rich Judeo-Christian heritage that we have. And I would suspect that many of you would wholeheartedly agree that the scriptures of the Old and New Testament are the revealed will of God. Without that, we would not know that God was a trinity. The word trinity does not appear in the scriptures, but we know there is a trinity by good and necessary consequence. Why bring that up with a request for a petition, a, an ordinance regarding drag events? Well, it is because those scriptures also, by good and necessary consequence, show us, reveal to us God's purpose of man and woman, male and female, how He created them and His purpose for them as redemptive history continued and as His revelation continued, we understand more and more of what God's purpose is for male and female. And it is not homosexuality, it is not transgenderism, it is not Drag Story Hour and the intent in that to sway the minds of young children to be confused about their gender, the gender that God brought them into this world with. That's the foundation of our request for such an ordinance. And those who comply with it, society and culture and government that comply with it can expect God's blessing. But those who go against it can expect God to condemn that and not bring His blessing but His cursing. With that, I want my, my son, the pastor of Reformed Heritage Presbyterian Church.
Greetings, Commissioners. You should have in front of you a presentation, it should be nine or so slides. I'm going to read through those and discuss those briefly. It's titled LGBTQ+ Drag Performances: Twisting Minds, Mutilating Bodies, and Grooming Children. And sadly, that's exactly what's happening in our community. Last fall, I went with a group from our church to the streets of Sanford to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ, calling all present to repent of sin and trust in Christ for salvation, which wonderfully renews us in the image of God as male and female. At an event hosted by the Sanford Yoga and Community Center, young children were presented and exposed to drag queens brought in for a paid event to read stories that promote transgendering children. One of the drag queens present, Stormy Day, has links on social media which picture him publicly engaging in all sorts of sexual perversion, gender confusion, and valid behavior that some call adult entertainment. Pictures include persons who have apparently mutilated their bodies with fake breasts and lopped off genitalia, posing partially nude at times in sexually provocative burlesque and goth routines with actual demonic attire, literal horns on their head and all. The next page there you'll see are pictures of this Stormy Day who performed for some of our children here in town. This is apparently another side job that this person has. You see young persons pictured there with her legs spread wide open. That's from their own Facebook page, performing the sexually lewd routine. This same drag performer at the Sanford Yoga Center likely read children's books to kids, encouraging them to become transgender, and more photos will demonstrate that shortly. Now, will we really permit people who say, as seen in the picture on the left, it's small print as I have it here, but you can read it there, "It's scream time and I am the scream queen. Don't doubt me or you might feel my fangs. So whether you are a baby ghoul or a big old monster, come and see this," I think it says, "weather, witch, shock, and awe," to read to those precious children? Are we really going to permit such persons to read to those precious children in our community to be groomed and brought into this same depraved lifestyle? Are we sure? No babies or children were harmed or devoured at the Sanford Yoga Center? The next page, please. The child transgender book Calvin was displayed and possibly read to Lee County children. You see that pictured there from its Amazon page. This was used at the Child Drag Story Hour. The picture on the right shows that, along with Gustavo and some other books listed there that they had. And the description of this book Calvin from Amazon, it says, "In this joyful and impactful picture book, a transgender boy prepares for the first day of school and introduces himself to his family and friends for the first time. Calvin has always been a boy, even if the world sees him as a girl. He knows who he is in his heart and in his mind, but he hasn't yet told his family. Finally, he can wait no longer. I'm not a girl, he tells his family. I'm a boy, a boy in my heart and in my brain." That book was quite possibly read, even those lines perhaps read, to our children in Sanford. You can see the pictures of that there. And the fact that this book references even mentioning this before he's told his family gives you a hint, perhaps, at the idea of those in our community who would like to see our children transition without even the knowledge, evident knowledge of their parents. The next page, the grooming begins in Sanford. The person in blue attire, hopefully it's in color print for you there, is also a drag queen. The picture on the left, you see one drag queen. This is, I believe, Stormy Day, by all evidence online, reading to the children. You can still see Calvin booked in the lower left corner in that left picture there. I didn't take the time to research what's in all the other books. I'm sure there's more problems there. On the picture on the right, yes, there are children pictured there at the Sanford Yoga Center being read to. The next slide, even at the Christmas parade in Sanford. The same group of people, similar group brought, I believe maybe even a float to the Christmas parade. Others spoke to me and I heard through third sources, a lot of complaints about this, that they had their children at the Christmas parade. This was down, you know, Main Street as it were, and you see there's drag queens there in the parade as well. Well, the next slide, the next page, the Sanford Yoga and Community Center targets children to bring them into a confused, harmful LGBTQ lifestyle that often promotes self-harm, taking medicine or injections that damage their bodies and destroy mental health. This often leads to mutilating the body, physically mutilating yourself due to gender or sexual confusion, hormone imbalances from medications, and just being lied to about what you are as a boy or a girl. Such kids sadly, as you probably know the stats, commit suicide pretty often. We don't want that. Notice the targeted ad, again from the Sanford Yoga's own Facebook page with the four children there looking down, the girl in red with a mustache drawn on her face, the other three children. Frankly, it's hard to tell if they're boys or a girl. That's the goal. That's the design. That's what they're indoctrinating our children into. That's not helpful. That's not loving. That's harmful. And in fact, as we will see here, they do this to raise funds for the LGBT center that they have here in town with their drag shows. These are ticketed events. The next page, other Sanford businesses like Hugger Mugger Brewing are aiding and abetting these organizations that seek to spread these harmful LGBT lifestyles. And you see that there in the picture. On the right side near the bottom, it, it also tells you that the funds and proceeds, I'm sorry, it's the next page that shows you the proceeds will go to your local LGBT resource center. And then the next page, you can see, I believe this is the last, second to last page in the slide, Sanford is still holding paid ticketed drag performances. The proceeds go to the resource center. Well, finally, what is the petition then? The petition, which I believe has been presented and is there before you, but to summarize that briefly here, we implore, we urge you, as the magistrates ordained by God in our county, and we pray for this for the city, to solemnly and lovingly do your God-given duty to uphold justice, to protect the innocent people and the children especially of Sanford and Lee County, who are the most vulnerable, from these lewd, harmful, unnatural, and destructive displays and performances, whether down Main, Main Street at a Christmas parade or behind closed doors at ticketed events of adult men dressed up as women who even say they will put their fangs in baby ghouls. We also urge the prohibition and removal of such LGBT organizations and so-called resource centers that clearly are grooming children and will destroy even many adults with these doctrines and practices that mutilate mind and body while searing the soul. I've also heard that LGBT books and resources targeting children have been displayed at our Lee County Library. We would not want that either. To tolerate and permit such evil is evil. To allow such lewd behavior that ought to be criminalized is criminal. You local commissioners, you are called by God and the laws of this country, state, city, and county to restrain evil and to uphold that which is good, as defined by the laws of nature, flowing from the triune God of Scripture. Doing so is good, it is just, and it is loving to all, even and especially those who are being harmed, those precious children especially, while their minds are still developing. It will, and it may rebuke and reform the criminal out of harmful lifestyles and their own confusion. It will certainly protect the innocent and with God's blessing will promote a happier, holier, and healthier people and community here locally. Well, may the Lord grant such and give us repentance toward God and faith in Jesus Christ to be the glorious and flourishing men and women made in His image that He has designed us to be. And may we not cause a single one of His precious children to stumble. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions from Mr. Boehr? Commissioner Lovett? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sharp? Thank you. Just a reminder that you may want to consider approaching the city as some of these venues are in the city, as well as if you wish to pursue this with the state legislature, as the legislature does have a bill stuck somewhere in some committee, but Representative Salz and Senator Bergen would be your point of contact there. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is the managers' reports, monthly financial reports. Candace is back again?
In your agendas, you have the June 2024 sales tax report. As a reminder, these reports run three months behind. The sales tax revenues finished at 3.35% ahead of the same period last fiscal year. The July 2024 monthly financial report is also included in your agenda items. Adverum tax collections are 1.68% of the adopted budget. And at this point in the fiscal year, the target for expenditures is 8.33%. There are several departments that are over this target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. However, if they're, those encumbrances are excluded, the departments that remain over target are, are due to the payment of annual dues and subscriptions.
Questions for Candace? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now is the manager's report.
Okay, let's go over ongoing projects, the Lee County Athletic Park. We have building construction going on. All five building foundations are completed. Two buildings have vertical walls and wood beam roofs installed. Field house has a foundation in place with vertical masonry block wall construction nearly complete. And the maintenance building, metal framing and trusses installation are nearing completion and the metal roof installation is in the process. Field construction, ball fields are under construction with all field drainage and irrigation installed and the field builder installing cover surface, play-in sand mix. I'm sure it's gotten a workout today. Rectangle fields are at a rough grade and will be the focus of the builder after the ball fields are completed. Field lighting is installed on about 75% of the site and will be completed once rough grading is complete on fields seven, eight, and nine. Site construction, parking lots A and B have the base asphalt layers installed. Stone base at parking lot C is complete with asphalt installation scheduled the week of September 9th for the completion of the base layers of asphalt for the entire site. As construction nears completion, a final top layer of asphalt will be installed just before completion. We continue to work with D.R. Horton and Matt Adams to finalize the Duke-CEMC power easements between Ashby Village and the Lee County Athletic Park. We are planning to bring this back to you, hopefully in the near future, once everything has been reviewed and negotiated. We continue to work on potential change orders and we'll bring this to you as soon as possible. Phase one and two of the parks projects at Comon's Children's Park, playground equipment was delivered August 9th and the shelter has been ordered and is scheduled to be delivered the week of September 13th. We continue to coordinate with Churchett to schedule work for the bathroom, shelter, and playground installation and Mark's Construction to complete the sidewalk and shelter pad installation. OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project, as you are aware, the original bids came in over budget. We have gotten changes to that approved and the project documents have been updated by the architect, Withers Ravenel, and the project is now backed out to bid. And the pre-bid meeting was held September 12th and this bids, that bid period is from September 5th to the 26th. Library building project, as you know, we've approved the GMP and a few alternates for that and have issued the notice to proceed, I believe, was signed last week. And the finance department has continued to work with bond council and the local government commission to move ahead with our financing. And we hope to have sold the, sell those bonds on September 25th and close October 10th. We continue to have evaluated five requests for qualifications for third-party testing. We've reviewed and scored all those submissions and we're bringing that to the board in October. The historic courthouse renovation project currently focused on the roof replacement. The bids, when we put it out to bid, we only received one bid, so we are working with our architects and the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office to update bid documents based on feedback and questions from contractors that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting. So we are hoping to get that package back out by early October and keep that project moving. So we hope to open those three weeks after they go out. Horton parking lot improvements, we are currently looking to add a smaller drive through the parking lot just below the pool area and bathhouse, which would add 17 designated parking space, spots, and eliminating unsafe parking conditions according to Washington Avenue. A proposed add alternative will also be included to add a... A proposed add alternative will also be included to add additional sidewalk along Washington Avenue towards the community garden. The plan is to bid the project by the end of January 2024. Government Center, you know, we're continuing to work, that should be January 25, thank you. Sorry. I didn't know, shocker. Lee County Government Center, we're continuing to work on the generator project. We've been updated on that previously, and we're continuing to work on that. We also, with the, along with the financing for the library and the Viper project, went through a bond rating recently. I would like to say that on August 24, 21st, 2024, Moody's assigned an A, capital A, little A, three rating to the county's estimated 28 million Series 2024 LOBS, and currently affirmed the county's capital A, little A, to issue a rating on its outstanding GO bonds. On September 6th, S&amp;P Global Ratings assigned a double A long-term rating to our LOBS and affirmed the county's double A long-term rating on the county's general obligation debt. Copies of those reports were included in your package for your review. Other information, I am happy to say that on August 26th, 2024, we were notified that Lee and Chatham Counties' proposal for intermediary agency services or reentry had been accepted, and that the counties would be receiving $225,000 to provide those services. I'd like to congratulate to our reentry coordinator, Kristi Bravoy, for her work on this, along with the rest of the community support services team for their work on the successful proposal, and that also included Whitney working on that quite a bit. On September 3rd, 2024, the county received notification that our project, Lee Local Agricultural Growth Zone, had been selected for funding. The estimated funding amount for this project will be $489,443. Congratulations to Extension Director Bill Stone and the Cooperative Extension Team for their work on the project. And during September 11th and 12th, 2024, Lee County held its first mental health first aid training for 15 employees, which was made possible through funding allocated by Senator Bergen. We plan to offer this training multiple times throughout the year going forward, and we'd like to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Just, I had, what, where are we at with the buggy building drainage?
Jennifer? Hmm? Ryan? We approved the engineering last time.
There's a lot of rain out there, Ryan.
So currently, we're working with the engineer, we selected REI to handle the engineering. We did get the estimated construction cost down to a little over $100,000, so that's including engineering fees, so much less than what we had originally requested.
Requested, yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovett?
No questions.
You're all alone down there, I'm sorry.
I'm all alone.
And I apologize for missing the date on that. Okay, we will be going into closed session here, but before we do, we'll start with Commissioner comments. Commissioner Lovett?
Yes, I'll try to be brief. Thank you for all that came out tonight. It's a good, good country when you can feel, you can express what you feel like you need to express, so. And I want to give a shout out to our county, and I know Councilmember Rhodes is with us. We didn't get a very good shout out during the fire at the makepeace building of Colts and re-shifting folks to the Hill Center, so I want to give us a pat on the back for the county, but I know you guys just missed over that, no problem on that, but thank you for what our county did to help with the city engaging in that. And personally, I want to thank each and every one of you again for all the cards, thoughts, prayers during this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, thank, no comments.
Commissioner Sharp, you're all alone over there.
Yeah. No, I want to expound on what Mr. Lovett said. Please pray for this man, he's a dear friend of mine, and let's help him when we can, and tonight, on your way home, be careful, it's very dangerous out there, so, thank you.
Very much so, and I'll add to that, Commissioner Reeves as well. He has issues with the weather now that he has new acrobatics to his bones. That being said, Councilmember Rhodes, I want to say thank you for being here this evening. Usually I try to make the city council on a regular basis, and then I give them all the reports on what happens, so I trust they read it. I just want to note that our clerk, Haley Hall, was recognized during our recent stars for her positivity. Thank you very much, Haley. She does, she's always fantastic. You come into her office and she's bubbly, smiling, and whatever you need, she's there to take care of you, so can't say enough for her, can't say enough for our assistant managers. Every time you go in there, they always give me something to talk about, or hear about, or feed me some more information, as well as our county manager and our, and our legal staff. Elizabeth and her, so I want to say thank you. Tomorrow is Constitution Day, establishing our constitutional republic. Nothing irritates me more than being called a democracy, so I'll leave it at that. About 237 years ago, the state of North Carolina did not participate in the first Congress. State of North Carolina, along with the state of Rhode Island, refused to participate in the first Congress because they didn't sign off on the Constitution because it did not have a Bill of Rights. So the first thing the new Congress did was establish a Bill of Rights, and what you have is the Ten Amendments to the Constitution. So in December 15th of 1791, we had a Bill of Rights, and soon after, both states joined the Union. Little history there. We just finished the Lee County Agricultural Fair, and it ended, and of course, we had some rain, but overall, it was pretty good pot attendance. But when I came up to pay for my ticket, Pam Curley was at the gate. I looked at Pam on Saturday afternoon, and I said, "Pam, next year, we will not be parking on our soccer fields at the athletic park." So just wanted to share that with you. And then of course, Friday, I will be departing for Florida. I have a celebration of life for a family member, but we will be back in time for Monday. That being said, as we noted earlier, the rain, the weather, please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding. Commissioner Connect?
Moving to go into closed session, per NC General Statute 1433181183, to consult with our attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege, and per General Statute 131431381186, to consider qualification, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee or the prospective public officer or employee.
You've heard the motion to go into closed session, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, please drive safe, wear your seatbelts, no speeding. You want five? Ten minutes. Ten minutes.[1098.15] Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
Will you count me in? I've been awake for a while now. You got me feeling like a child now. 'Cause every time I see your bubbly face, I get the tingles in a silly place. Starts in my toes and I crinkle my nose wherever it goes. I always know that you make me smile. Please stay for a while now, just take your time wherever you go. The rain is falling on my window pane, but we are hiding in a safer place. Undercover, staying dry and warm. You give me feelings that I adore. This starts in my toes, make me crinkle my nose wherever it goes. I always know that you make me smile. Please stay for a while now, just take your time wherever you go. But what am I gonna say? When you make me feel this way, I just, mm. Starts in my toes, makes me crinkle my nose wherever it goes. I always know that you make me smile. Please stay for a while now, just take your time wherever you go. I've been asleep for a while now. You tuck me in just like a child now. 'Cause every time you hold me in your arms, I'm comfortable enough to feel your warmth. It starts in my soul and I lose all control. When you kiss my nose, the feeling shows. 'Cause you make me smile, baby, just take your time now, holding me tight. Wherever, wherever, wherever you go. Wherever, wherever, wherever you go. I'm feeling further, feeling further from you every day. You're in the stars and the stars, yeah, your world's away. I'm moving on, moving on, then I hear you say, hold on, hold on. We're losing light, losing light, yeah, we're fading fast. We had a fire, need a spark, oh, it never lasts. Just look at me, look at me, I've been burning for you so long, so long. I should walk away. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. I'm losing love, losing you, losing everything. Losing faith in the world where I wanna be. So I don't care if the one thing that's killing me is so wrong, so wrong. I should walk away. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. I look at you and, oh. I get the feeling, oh. I think that I should hold on, hold on. Take time to realize that your warmth is crashing down on me. Take time to realize that I am on your side. Didn't I, didn't I tell you? But I can't spell it out for you. No, it's never gonna be that simple. No, I can't spell it out for you. If you just realized what I just realized, then we'd be perfect for each other and we'll never find another. Just realized what I just realized. We'd never have to wonder if we missed out on each other now. Take time to realize, oh, I'm on your side. Didn't I, didn't I tell you? Take time to realize that this all can pass you by. Didn't I tell you? But I can't spell it out for you. No, it's never gonna be that simple. No, I can't spell it out for you. If you just realized what I just realized, then we'd be perfect for each other and we'll never find another. Just realized what I just realized. We'd never have to wonder if we missed out on each other, but it's not the same. No, it's never the same if you don't feel it too. If you meet me halfway, if you would meet me halfway, it could be the same for you. If you just realized what I just realized, then we'd be perfect for each other and we'll never find another. Just realized what I just realized. We'd never have to wonder. Just realized what I just realized. If you just realized what I just realized. Missed out on each other now. Missed out on each other now. Realize, 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 realize. Do you hear me talking to you? Across the water, across the deep blue ocean, under the open sky. Oh, my baby, I'm trying. Boy, I hear you in my dreams. I feel your whisper across the sea. I keep you with me in my heart. You make it easier when life gets hard. Lucky I'm in love with my best friend. Lucky to have been where I have been. Lucky to be coming home again. They don't know how long it takes. Waiting for a love like this. Every time we say goodbye. I wish we had one more kiss. I'll wait for you, I promise you I will. Lucky I'm in love with my best friend. Lucky to have been where I have been. Lucky to be coming home again. Lucky we're in love in every way. Lucky to have stayed where we have stayed. Lucky to be coming home someday. And so I'm sailing through the sea to an island where we'll meet. You'll hear the music fill the air. I'll put a flower in your hair. Though the breeze hits through the trees, the moves are pretty. You're all I see as the world keeps spinning round. You hold me right here, right now. Lucky I'm in love with my best friend. Lucky to have been where I have been. Lucky to be coming home again. Lucky we're in love in every way. Lucky to have stayed where we have stayed. Lucky to be coming home someday. My life is brilliant. My life is brilliant. My love is pure. I saw an angel, of that I'm sure. She smiled at me on the subway. She was with another man, but I won't lose him sleep all night, 'cause I've got a plan. You're beautiful. You're beautiful. You're beautiful, it's true. I saw your face in a crowded place. And I don't know what to do, 'cause I'll never be with you. Yes, she caught my eye as we walked on by. She could see from my face that I was flying high. And I don't think that I'll see her again, but we shared a moment that will last till the end. You're beautiful. You're beautiful. You're beautiful, it's true. I saw your face in a crowded place. And I don't know what to do, 'cause I'll never be with you. You're beautiful. You're beautiful. You're beautiful, it's true. There must be an angel with a smile on her face. When she thought up that I should be with you. But it's time to face the truth. Your lipstick stains on the front of my left side brains. I knew I wouldn't forget you, and so I went and let you blow my mind. Your sweet moonbeam, the smell of you in every single dream I dream. I knew when we collided, you're the one I have decided who's one of my kind. Hey, soul sister, ain't that Mister Mister on the radio? Stereo, the way you move ain't fair, you know. Hey, soul sister, I don't wanna miss a single thing you do tonight. Hey, hey, hey. Just in time, I'm so glad you have a one-track mind like me. You gave my life direction, a game short love connection we can't deny. I, I, I'm so obsessed. My heart is bound to beat right out my untrimmed chest. I believe in you like a virgin, you're Madonna, and I'm always gonna wanna blow your mind. Hey, soul sister, ain't that Mister Mister on the radio? Stereo, the way you move ain't fair, you know. Hey, soul sister, I don't wanna miss a single thing you do tonight. When you can't cut it off, watching news, going and drunk, I need some gangsta. I'm so loved, you're the only one I'm dreaming of, you see? I can be myself now.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Are you ready? Tanner, we're ready. Motion to adjourn? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you very much. Drive safe, wear your seat belts, no speeding.